Two awards related to staff activities and then five people on the public agenda. I don't have anything on page two. Page three, you have a unfinished council item regarding a property that had been to you previously. It's in District Six. No repair work has been done on that property, so we're bringing it back as requested by the council. Then in new council business, number one is a project that would fall under our spec warehouse program. One hundred and fifty-nine thousand square feet of space at Forty- uh, Fortieth Street North and Webb Road. IRB, just a reminder, issue IRB under the spec warehouse program. They would be entitled to a ninety-five percent tax abatement, property tax abatement for the first five years and fifty percent for the second five years if they lease at least half of the property by the end of the fi- first five-year period. Number two is an eight-point-eight million dollar IRB with a hundred percent property tax abatement for a twenty-one thousand square foot impatient geriatric behavioral health hospital. They anticipate that within the first five years, they'd create thirty-three new positions with average salary of fifty-five thousand dollars. Number three is scheduling of a public hearing for April nineteenth on amendments to the TIF plan for the TIF district surrounding the baseball stadium. And it's about related development, private development around the stadium. Page four. Number four is a fifty-thousand-dollar project upgrade data cable systems here on the first floor. We are doing these updates on an incremental basis as our budget and technology allows. Number five is two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars for a renovation project to create appropriate customer service space on the first floor. As you know, during COVID, we utilize the information desk, but this is actually going to be a much more significant presence on the first floor to make it easier for people to do business with us that are walking in for housing and other departments. Number six is six-hundred-thousand-dollar project upgrade large water meters that we have related to our industrial and customer, excuse me, industrial and commercial customer uses. Number seven and number eight are related. The both would approve additional design work and revise project budgets for improvements on West Street from Forty-seventh Street to I-235. Includes pavement, stormwater improvements, signalization, and the construction of a multi-use path. Page five. Number nine is our annual water conservation rebate program. A hundred thousand dollars for, to reimburse homeowners, excuse me, for the installation of water-saving appliances in existing homes. Since two thousand and thirteen, estimated savings from this program has been four-hundred-and-fifty-five million gallons of water. Number ten is the, are the results from our general obligation note sale. They came in higher than our last note sale, and you would expect that because of what's happening in the markets, but it's still considered to be good rates or favorable rates. Number eleven is a request to rename the Maya Angelou Northeast Branch Library. Recommendation is to receive that request, designate the library board as the naming committee, and referring this to them for recommendations back to you. Number twelve is the annual agreement with Cedric County for Housing First Program. If you remember, we split the cost for a program that's about three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. This year, however, the county will be making cash contribution, but also a portion of their obligation will be met by providing a case manager for the Housing First participants, which is, I think, a great step in terms of outcomes and improving conditions for our homeless.
So this is a new position that we've not had before?
Yeah, that's my understanding. Sally, I think, could help.
And their contribution will?
Uh, this was actually approved in the contract for last year, but Cedric County, over the course of a year, had four failed recruitments to fill that slot. They finally filled the slot on March twenty eighth, so definitely expect greater service to the clients.
Thank you.
Number thirteen would provide a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars in home funds to the Cerebral Policy, Paul Z, excuse me, Research Foundation for an upgrade of a hundred-unit apartment community to make, it's an accessible community, but it's to modernize the, the complex. Number fourteen is amendment to the ordinance that created the Citizen Review Board. We've talked about this previously. It would allow for the council to appoint seven members to the board, notify complainants when the board decides to review a case that they're involved in. Would also provide for disciplinary information to be provided to the board when it's reviewing a case and allow the board to issue written reports when they finish their review of a case. Page six, two planning items. The first one, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the first one actually had DAB denial and an MAPC denial coming to you.
It had a DAB denial initially because they wanted more information. MAPC sent it back, DAB then approved it, and MAPC then denied it.
Okay, I missed that second.
Can you say that again?
Yeah.
So, um, DAB denied it because they wanted more information and asked MAPC to send it back to them, which they did. DAB then approved it, and then MAPC denied it. So it's a being appealed.
Is that the first member that's happened?
It's the first time I can recall, at least while I've been on council.
Yeah.
Double denial.
Denial, approval, denial.
Right. Double denial equals a positive, doesn't it?
Two negatives.
Both denies, both positives. Mathematically. Mathma- it's actually a math principle in there, whatever. And then number two had MAPC approval and DAB denial, and that's in District Six. On page seven, on the consent, uh, excuse me, you still have non-consent for the airport agenda. Number one is the, is a one-year marketing agreement with Gredeman Group. There were proposals solicited. I believe there were three proposals that were reviewed, and Gredeman has recommended for the contract. There are also four one-year renewal options. Number two is a supplemental agree- agreement with Garver for the construction phase and closeout services associated with the General Aviation Apron Reconstruction Project at Eisenhower. Number three, I think, moves to the consent agenda. That, our mistake for putting that on non-consent. So all I have on page seven. On page eight, number one is a resolution that was floated by the Cedric County Association of Cities supporting the location of a mental health hospital in the, our region. And they've asked all the cities to approve this to show solidarity. You already have this on your legislative agenda, so this just formalizes that. That's all I have. I don't have anything on nine or on ten. Page eleven, number eight would approve a grant from Child Care Aware of Kansas. One million dollars for equipment and staffing costs associated with the city's rec and community centers. Number ten is applying for a grant, a fire prevention and safety grant, to train five fire operations staff members in community risk reduction. The grant would be for five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, would have a match of twenty-seven thousand dollars, which we can accommodate in the fire budget. Number eleven is seeking a grant from AARP to construct a safety fence at Seneca Park. That park has a significant amount of use for pickleball and other purposes, and the grant would be for ten thousand five hundred dollars. Page twelve, number twelve is a settlement of a claim related to a police department traffic accident. Number fourteen, uh, this is declaring surplus of property that we, the city owns in the Gilbert and Mosley remediation area was originally purchased for that reason. We now can list that as surplus. What initiated that is adjacent property owners have expressed an interest in the site, so we're gonna, if you approve it and list it as surplus, then we'll go ahead and market the property. Number fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are, uh, would fund five houses to be constructed by Habitat. And we would use Housing Development Loan Program funding for the construction. Page thirteen, number eighteen, twenty-five thousand dollars in available cares funding for park and recs, summer activity camp, and summer of discovery programs. Mayor, that is all I have.
All right, any questions? So, number eighteen, can you repeat what, what that grant? Oh, it's Community Service Block. Is, is this different than? Let me, let me start all over on this one. Like, a lot of thoughts just rushed. Can you just say again, this is a block grant, CARES Act, allocation of community service block grants? Can you just sum that up one more time?
Sure, it will go to help fund our summer activity camp and summer of discovery programs. And that's supplemental to funding that, those programs already receive.
Thank you.
We expand a little bit on, on number eight on the consent, how the childcare award works.
Yeah.
Um, who wants to address that?
Councilmember Bluebuck, since we do have childcare that is actually permitted by the state, we're eligible for these grants, and so we've been providing, uh, these applications for these grants, and it's gonna be providing us funding throughout the year monthly to add extra staffing, to add extra equipment, to replace a lot of the items in our recreation centers. So we're very excited to be receiving this grant. There's no match, and there's no payback, and it doesn't include any staff other than part-time staff that we would be adding to help with some of our programs.
Is, is this afforded to the public somehow with reduced childcare or something, or?
It's for folks that actually provide childcare, but also to supplement their operations to be able to do that.
But, I guess, like, in District Four, if you don't have a rec center or anything like that, you're just, that, that area town's just left out, right?
Well, it's for the rec centers that are providing these services, yes. Yeah.
Thanks.
I guess just for, for me, just clarification, because I'm getting tagged. I had nothing to do directly with the potential, or the request to rename the Maya Angelou Library. That was citizen-led, and I was made aware later that that effort was asked for.
And just to follow up on that, because I also am seeing a little bit of a storm on social media about this because the, the current naming went through the process and frankly represents a, a national hero. And I understand, kicking it to the, uh, library board, I'm just wondering, and this is a question more for staff, is there a way in which, we have a lot of things that aren't named? Is there a way, and I think that people come forward and they want to honor kind of our own history and our own leaders, and they might, with these proposals, let's do this and rename this place, might not know that there's parks that we really don't, that still aren't really named in, in other areas that, that we could have an or attitude instead of a, no, it's, we can have an and attitude instead of an or attitude. So, is there a way in which we could create a system in which people could actually submit their proposals for naming and have a group actually go through those and try, try to match them up a little better than just trying to rename some, a library in this case that's already gone through the process and is named, and everyone, I think, is happy with the name. It's just some people would like this other person to be recognized as well. So, is there a better process in which we can look forward and?
If the council wants, we can give some thought to that. I mean, right now, the way the ordinance is written is somebody submits a request, and that triggers the process, right? Now, the council could decide not to, to appoint a naming committee for whatever reason, but it's, I think the ordinance pretty much says you will appoint a naming committee if you get a request. In terms of broadening that and then saying somebody wants to honor someone who, you know, because of work they did in a specific district or citywide, we could look at, I mean, if that's what council wants, we could look at facilities and city-owned property that could be appropriately named. I'm not quite sure if it's, I'm kind of going off the cuff here, so I don't know.
Right, I think this request might be very specific.
Yeah.
Although the intent of the request might be less specific, more, we're trying to honor this person. So the, there might have been an opportunity to talk to the citizen and, well, we, what, could we, I guess, meet the intention by naming something else after that this, a, a local person who's deserving of such credit without having to rename something? So, because this is a very specific request, not going to the library board, and library board will make a call on it, but the library board also probably won't kick it back and saying, well, you have this park over here that's not really named, or this street over here that might actually be better, in which case it might trigger the individual to, well, let's, to keep going through the process in a more targeted way, whi- which I think would be much more time-consuming than us just saying, okay, you want, you, there, there's a call to name something after this individual. Let us figure out what we could name, what was available, what's open, and then go back and say, do the, these are the options. What do you, what, to the community, what do you think? So, I don't know if there's a easier way to do that so that we're, something that might not be a library, it might be something else, can, we don't have to go through the library board to use their time. We could do something a little more global. But just something to, I guess, if staff comes up with any type of thoughts on that. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. To that end, I'd also like us to consider frivolous and nuisance requests. I could see how this could expose us in that, because we don't have a really set policy on how people can submit requests for naming, they could then start to use this as a way to take unnecessary time when we really should be doing business of the city instead of listening to frivolous or nuisance requests just to be fun or to prank us, right? And, and right now, we're exposed on this because we don't have a policy. And that, right now, if anybody wants to make any request to rename something really goofy, we're gonna have to take time out of an agenda review to consider it, or name a committee to then spend time doing that. When we all know, come on, that's, that's goofy, but we're kind of exposed right now.
No, and I didn't even think of that. That's a really good point, like, anyone could, let's name the next water treatment.
Bodie McBoatface Memorial.
Right, or, yeah, they, it.
You do have some protections. I, I can get the naming, maybe I should get the naming policy back to you. There are criteria that have to be met for someone to even be considered, right? And, and they ha- they have to have pretty significant accomplishments.
We don't have anything named after Billy the Kid yet, he's from Wichita.
Or anything named after Councilmember Bluebuck yet, but.
Billy the Kid's mom signed the charter, making Wichita City, so.
Yeah, it's a new street, I plan that, so we can start naming that for some people.
If we didn't have another program item, I could say this is when we should adjourn, but unfortunately, we have two things.
This is important, this is important work, Mr. Manjri.
So why don't I do this? First of all, let me get the naming process out to all of you, just as a reminder of where we are. You know, it's, I, I think about what was happened, what happened with a naming facility for former Mayor Brewer, and that originally, South Side Library was considered for him, that the, the library board elected not to go in that direction, and then the, it then came back in terms of community center. So, in a way, what you're suggesting happened anyway. But, well, we, let me get that policy out to you first, and then we'll brainstorm.
And a lot of times, that's the case, but what, what winds up happening is now there'd be a story about how the city is thinking about changing the name of this, you know, this beloved poet, renaming something that's already gone through the process, and we're gonna get flooded with stuff about how, how dare you, city people, think you could do this? And the reality is, like, it's the process, we can't slow, we can't stop it. So, you know, it's just, it, it winds up, I think, causing us some trust in, in the community, and if we could have a slightly, I think, larger, um, perspective with this, it might be better. And the same thing, you know, the Brewer Center is a great example of this because frankly, it showed the community was interested in naming something after former Mayor Brewer, and the naming the, the community center after him was a much better, uh, fit, in, in my opinion. But we had to go through that up and down of people why, who, who felt that it was an insult to, to Brewer's legacy, and that's, of course, wasn't our intent, if you take it in, in the whole holistic, uh, or the entirety of the conversation. It actually worked out. And I do want to just mention, because I don't think it's on here, but maybe get an update on this. The Diversity Inclusion Civil Rights Board has agreed to serve as a naming committee for a name change for a, or an over, overnaming of a street by the Jewish Community Center that just opened up. And my understanding is we have to empower that board with a motion to do so. Is that something that we can do that's not in the agenda? Can I do that from the bench to get that, the ball rolling on that? Or should that be an item that's, for some reason, has to have a PowerPoint memo staffer telling us about it?
I know you're saying that in total respect for the process of staff, but it's, uh, that's actually scheduled to come to you on the twelfth.
Okay, okay, good, so it is coming up, okay. And, yeah, because I think some stuff too makes, should be on the fast track, right? If it's something like Tree Lane, and we can actually name it in, in honor of, of work that's being done there, and the, I, I think most people would be in agreement with that, then how can we kind of fast-track certain things, or other things will take a little longer? So it, the gist is, I, I think that we, we would like to explore the process that's currently in place and see if there's ways to make it better. Further questions?
Marley Carpenter is available to give you a legislative update, next, Mayor.
Hey, welcome, Marley. What's happening at Speaker?
Hello, oh my goodness. This is the last week of the legislative session, first adjournment is today, but there is still so much work to be done. Just some updates on things that are moving. Um, the Automated License Plate Recognition System Open Records Request Bill has passed both the House and Senate. There is no amendment in the second body, so the bill, excuse me, does go to the governor for her signature. The bill, Senate Bill four ninety-three, the prohibition of cities and counties from regulating plastics, it did pass the Senate and the House, and the Senate did concur with the House changes. So the bill does go to the governor as well. The final bill I'll mention before I get to taxes is twenty-seven seventeen, which is the Attorney General's bill that prohibits municipalities from, from preventing the enforcement of federal immigration laws. The bill did pass both the House and Senate and is now on its way to the governor.
Did that bill, Marley, real quick, the last time we heard about that bill, there was some language in there that would prohibit us from putting, I, I think, photos on, on some of our city IDs. Pretty much would have, I think, some unintended consequences that, that we expressed here. Was that language tightened up so that we can still utilize bus passes with your picture on it and passes to the zoo with your picture on it so that, you know, we, we can avoid fraud?
I am not a hundred percent certain about the photo portion of it. In talking with, um, city attorneys, they did feel comfortable with some of the language. I do not know about the photo issue. So, there was not any changes in the House Committee, or in the Senate Committee, I apologize, on the bill. So I will check with, um, I'll check with the city attorney's office and get back to you on that.
Yeah, that, that would be appreciated, because it's a pretty big deal, and that's why we mentioned it in the last time we heard about this. We're really, the, the unintended consequence, like, we, we hand out library cards, we do a lot of stuff, and frankly, it takes nothing for us to print a picture on it, would say it's technology, and I don't want the A G to.
In their initial review, in their initial review, they did not think it would prohibit anything that you're currently doing now. So I wasn't aware that the picture issue was an issue, and so we can definitely double-check on that, but the initial review is that, was that there, what you're doing now can still be done.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moving on to tax bills, there are three tax bills in conference. The first tax bill has been agreed to, there are twenty-six tax items in that. Um, looking at some of the key issues for Wichita, there are some changes to the local government revenue neutral rate process regarding the hearing process. There is a tech and community college tax credit, and then the aviation tax credit is in that bill as well. That is on the Joint City-County Chamber Agenda. There is also some language on sales tax apportionment. There was an issue in Atchison County, um, in city-county sales tax sharing. There were some proposed changes to the way that process worked, but there was a compromise, and ballot language will be required on the city-county split when the local sales tax is on the ballot, but it leaves all current laws in place. The second bill that they are looking at has larger dollar items, and there are ten items in that bill, and this bill has been, um, agreed to as well. That does include the childcare tax credit that is on the Joint City-County Chamber, um, board, uh, agenda as well. And it also includes a storefront property tax refund for COVID shutdowns. However, all the dollars are paid from a state, federal relief fund, and counties are not required to pay anything into the that fund as well. Um, the final bill is House Bill twenty-one oh six. This is the bill that deals with food sales tax. This has not yet been agreed to, they're going back today to finalize their agreement. The initial, um, agreement that they're coming back to continue discussion on is an initial rate cut in the state sales tax on food on January one of two thousand and twenty-three to four percent, and then it would be reduced to two percent one year later after that. Again, there's no agreement on that, that could change, um, going forward. In addition, the Kansas Department of Commerce is working on a provision, a provide, budget proviso for the omnibus budget to hold Starbonds districts harmless with this, um, cut in sales tax on food. With that, I will stand for questions, and just to let you know, none of the tax provisions have been signed. None of them have crossed either the House or Senate floor. have been signed, none of them have crossed either the House or Senate floor, so there still could be some changes, but the first two have been agreed to, but the sales tax on food has not.
So is this conference committee working?
Yes. Yes, House and Senate Conference Committee have been meeting nonstop for the last three days.
And what was the, I guess, the argument on waiting until 2023 to cut the food sales tax? Because it shouldn't have been budgetary, like, just, what's the hall talk?
Um, there's a lot of politics going into this as well. I know that they wanted to give retailers some additional time to adjust their systems and not have it implemented on July 1.
That's not surprising. Thank you for your honesty. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, we've got one other item, this is our monthly update on a program or service, and what we thought we'd do is share with you a program that came from NLC, it's addressing food insecurity for students, and our college students, and it's a partnership the city has with our three major universities. And I'm going to need to let Carter Craig give you an update on where we stand with that program.
Hey, welcome, Carter.
Thank you. As mentioned, I'm Carter Craig, I'm a Management Fellow in the City Manager's Office. I'm joined today by one of our university partners, Dr. Ken Stolfish of Friends University. We're also working together with Newman and Wichita State University to address food security through an NLC program called Cities, Addressing Basic Needs of Post-Secondary Students. Talk about an opportunity for a renaming, it's a bit of a mouthful. What it is, is a nationwide program to build stronger relationships between municipalities and universities to support student success. It's a two-year program, and the main sort of give from NLC is this technical assistance through a community of practice.
Just real quick, Carter, did you come up with that acronym?
No, the National League of Cities did.
Okay.
Yeah.
John, you should talk to your friends, man.
So like I mentioned, it's a, it's a two-year program, so we're in the same sort of class as the 2020 cohort. You can see we're in the 2021 cohort. It's a lot of cities covering a pretty diverse range of our country, and it allows us to tap into best practices, those sorts of things. Focusing on what we intend to do here in Wichita, we're partnering, like I said, with Friends, Newman, and Wichita State to address food insecurity among college students. There's research that shows that food insecure students, that food insecurity impacts their grade point average. We know from anecdotal reporting from our university or partners that it is a substantial issue on their campuses, and so we want to address it because we know that citizens who are happy and healthy in Wichita State and can continue to contribute in Wichita, and it's especially valuable at their universities, those draw in a lot of people, those take youth who grew up in Wichita and prepare them to continue to contribute. We also wanted to start thinking about issues that are, that have been touched on by the Food Systems Master Plan. So as you can see here, this is a map of food deserts, and our universities are located a substantial part in our food deserts. So there is tie-in here with, with that issue. Going to what our plan of action is, we've completed a data gathering process, we gave a 30-question survey to college students on the three campuses. We've grabbed that data, and now we're going to work with that community of practice and build relationships within our own community to implement solutions.
Carter, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Or would you rather wait till the end?
Yep.
So regarding the data collection, just because I'm kind of a data junkie, can you, was the survey something that NLC had, is it the standard survey so that it, and then also, I'm curious, you know, what you ask is important, but who you ask is important to make sure that you're, you're getting, you know, if you go to a certain department or you go to a certain area, you're going to get certain students that could skew the data? Can you just talk a little bit about the data collection?
Yes, so to address your first question, we, NLC, through that community of practice, was able to give us a lot of examples of surveys that have been used, and we picked questions and tailored questions for the information we were looking for. Dr. Stolfish can probably talk a little bit more about how the survey was administered, because it was administered through our university partners.
So this is not a perfect data collection strategy, so you'll appreciate that, but we, we just did it by email, and so we sent it out, and we had very different response rates at the three universities, so Wichita State had a pretty low response, they were doing another survey, Friends was kind of in the middle, and Newman outdid all of us, they, they had about 120 students respond, so I think our total sample was right around 200 students, which is not bad, when you get a couple hundred, you start to have statistical power and that sort of thing. So, yeah, so an email survey, and we know it's not perfect, but it did, it generated some interesting results for us.
Yes, and there's still a lot of data analysis to be done, but some encouraging things is the, the results from each university were fairly proportional with each other, so we're pretty sure we were measuring something that exists. There wasn't, you know, big skews depending on what university administered the survey. Some examples, early analysis of what we've done, and also to sort of give an example of the work we plan on doing. So this is a question we asked. We found there's a huge knowledge gap about food pantries. Each of these three universities has a food pantry on its campus, but there's evidence that suggests we don't necessarily have high visibility for those food pantries. So that's the data, the solution could be something along the lines, very hypothetical, a marketing campaign. How can we improve the operations of these food pantries to better meet student needs? Another example here focuses on sort of the nutritional quality of the food that students are eating, and a strong, you know, if you take the never and the sometimes together, that's, that's a big group of people who could probably do a better job providing nutritional food tours.
Carter, can I ask another?
Of course.
Maybe you and I should just go to lunch, I'm sorry. But the term balanced diet, or for the course of a day, how was that defined to the folks that you were asking?
That's a great question. This is the verbatim text that was given to them, so we are relying on their understanding of a balanced diet.
Yeah, because when I was in college, a balanced diet was like, if I had Doritos with my pizza, right, you know? So I'm just...
No worries.
Yeah, okay, I was trying to remember this could be by viewers.
I was hoping I could hold it in two hands.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, so I'm just, just curious, because that's a, that's a, a balanced diet is something that, you know, has a lot of different connotations and meanings to a lot of different people.
We are relying a lot on how their interpretation of that term, and hoping some of the K-12 education around that stuck, but that is, that is definitely a place where the gaps and the statistics are important. That's all I have for you, happy to take questions.
Yeah, how does this, specifically for Wichita State playing with University Village and the work that they were doing in trying to bring grocery to the area?
That's, that is something that we haven't quite touched on yet. So we talked about, you know, the next stage, next steps after gathering the status to start building partnerships, and that is an example of a place where we need to build partnerships as a group to address this issue.
Awesome. And did you, I know you gave the survey through email, did you work with the SGAs at each of those universities?
I can't pick to every individual university's experience.
We did not work for our SGA, although they are involved in, sort of, loosely involved in our food pantries, sort of housing the area with the SGAs, trying out the student ministries and student money, but, yeah, that would actually be, as we craft interventions and action steps, I think getting the student leaders involved would be a good, you know, a good idea, because they do, they know things that I, as an administrator, don't know on the ground, so.
Okay, and clarification, you said Newman did better than Friends.
Does that, does that go on the record somewhere?
Yeah, we got some work to do.
They, they got more, more responses, let's say that.
So just another question, what, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but what are the next steps? So we have some data that we've collected, what, what happens next? And like, what does success look like?
Right, so our committee is, is meeting with NLC, and we're going to say, these are our goals, this is what we have already, and we expect that they can give us some direction, we expect that they can give us some subject matter experts. I think the next step concretely is going to be gathering data about the food pantries, we've already started to do that. That seems like a really fertile ground for us to implement solutions around these issues.
Yeah, because that was going to be my first, some low-hanging fruit is when 56% of the students who responded didn't know there's food pantries, and there are food pantries on all three of the universities, and WSU Tech's four branches also have food pantries. But I know you're going to lean into NLC for some content expertise and subject matter experts, but there's also local folks who are working on this issue through the Health and Wellness Coalition and the Food Policy Committee, so maybe we can chat and see if they're, because I would hate to do work that's duplicative and already being done when there are obviously gaps. So if maybe you and I could, to get together, Carter, I'd welcome the opportunity.
We, we talk about the shotgun approach, we definitely want to be in that shell and coordinated.
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, that's all we have.
All right, is there any further questions for staff about anything? Or discussion really about anything? If there is none, then if there's no objection, then we'll adjourn. See no objection, we are adjourned, thank you.